Call me to this is the meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectment and Board of the Health Townhouse Law Attorney June 1st, 2021, 6:00 PM. Please stand for the.
The United States of America. We represent the Constitution, the Constitution, and justice for all.
Anyone recording the meeting other than us, please. Fire in some way. Being. So. Can you? First item on the agenda is the. First, 2021. Favor. The minutes of the meeting, March 15th, 2021. Second, favor. April 26, 2021. And the May 10th.
Yeah, just the the warning for the transfers. Is actually just. Requested. For these line like.
So it's not a vote?
Well, it's a vote to to recommend these transfers to.
Favor. The first item on our agenda is the update on the. God complaints Nelson and Meduski, I don't know if Shelley. The the update is that the the camel has been the camel has been finished and done and and.
Who's to get the insurance certificate?
Okay.
Laura left a message. That's that. I haven't seen. That was last week.
So they still wait the insurance certificate. And next week. Just book the sketch. Next week we'll have a have a hearing on the. Street dog issue. It'll be on our June 7th. Police station clerk position chief, are you on?
Yes, sir.
Updates you have?
So after last week's meeting, I put a a letter of interest out to. Our four dispatchers that we currently have for two 20 hour positions with a four hour block to be alternated on a Saturday between the both of them. And I got two responses back of of interest.
And today on another issue today, we switched over to digital.
Excuse me, I didn't get that, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, we switched over to digital.
Yeah, so what today our radio system has been phased up to our digital, all of our portables are cruiser radios and comes in much clearer. Next week they're going to try to do a another antenna upgrade, which will be along the lines of the digital, which should be the last leg of our whole upgrades.
Okay. Want to give us a report on the base? Without bring too much information?
I'm sorry, I didn't get that.
Want to give us a report on the the chase through town without last Saturday without giving us too much information?
Okay, so we had responded. We were asked by a. Party who lives with another party to. Do a well being check on it on a individual who we know that we've had gone there for. Issues before when our officer was en route to. To respond to the house with the person who does live there. That party was a female party was backing out of the driveway. And headed towards our officer. Almost colliding with our cruiser to take off from the area because there's been previous times that person has been hospitalized. Took off into Connecticut, our officer turned around. And attempted to stop that vehicle, vehicle followed out into Connecticut. Our officer stopped it just over the town, over the state line, pursuing that vehicle. Connecticut end up finding the vehicle. A little bit later on, who gave pursuit? That the party ended up colliding with a state trooper's vehicle in Connecticut. In turn came back into Hamden into Wilbraham. Well, Wilbraham noticed after a bolo was put out by the by our police department. To look for the well being on this individual. Wilbraham started in to try to stop the vehicle, vehicle continued out into Palmer to where it ended up crashing in Palmer. As Wilbraham had started to pursue, I think, along with Palmer. At that time. She was taken into custody brought for evaluation at the hospital and also charges were brought against her for failing to stop for a police officer.
No injuries to officers or anyone?
Uh, no injuries to any officers, damage to Connecticut State Police Cruiser.
And you're going to be interviewing people for the officer's position next week?
So next Monday, we have interview setting up, starting at six o'clock for five candidates that are applied that are qualified. For our full time police position. And. Out of those five candidates, we do have a internal candidate that has been allowed to. Go to the next with a new bridging in the police reform because of his certifications and his previous academies that he's attend. Equal out to a full time police academy, even though he works at a part time basis for us. But he does work full time at a college, so he is one of our candidates also of the five.
Is this a job description that we got from Collins or you developed yourself?
Um, excuse me, John, I didn't hear that.
The job description for this, did you develop it or is this part of Collins or a combination of both?
So the full time description was based off of previous hires that we've had through the through the Hand and Police Department from Chief Farnsworth that we put out for qualifications of a full time police officer.
I just want to jump back to the dispatch for a second. You said you had two towers up and running and you mentioned another one, are we going with a third tower for reception reasons or is it just for coverage?
No, as 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 far as I know, the two towers that are up, but we're going to be switching that third phase over to to the digital to allow us to have better reception.
And when is dispatch taking all the calls?
So. Tomorrow, we are doing a transition over to Wilbraham. For all calls coming into the Hampton Police Department, we'll be going to Wilbraham Regional Communications. And so 911 and all business calls will be floated over to Wilbraham, starting tomorrow around 10 o'clock.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Employee evaluations, Bob, Mr. W.
Yeah, I did send. Two examples to the board, one would be for. Department heads and one would be for staff members. I think both of them are fairly, or certainly the one for department heads is fairly comprehensive. The one for department staff members is certainly shorter and less comprehensive. But I think it will do the job. What I propose is that. Prior to the beginning of the new fiscal year. That we meet with the apartment heads. Establish a limited number of overall goals for the department for the coming fiscal year. I'm thinking two or three, maybe four. And at the end of the fiscal year. Fiscal 22, that would be. Make a decision. And rate the department head based on accomplishment of those goals or objectives. I think the department head would then meet with their staff members. And conduct an evaluation. Perhaps it could also, they could establish some goals where appropriate.
And the performance of you for the, I guess, this is for the employee, it's got. Miscellaneous performance now, I I it says complaints, motor vehicle violations, is that? I mean, like with the highway department or something, they'd be driving one of our trucks?
Right, I I, you know, that's not appropriate for. Some employees, I left it in there because it would be appropriate for public safety employees and the highway department.
Bob, you're going to work with department heads, so their employees are aware of the expectations, job descriptions and whatever advancements they're going to need to make going forward.
Correct. Correct. And I see this as another piece in the upgrading of the HR functions for the town.
Is it on the? Is there going to be a? A grading system? You know, like, like you have. I don't know. Needs succeeds, that type of thing, like you have it, you have it on the for the for the. If the department has, but I don't see it for the. You know, employees of the department.
I certainly think for the department heads. We can do the same, certainly for. Staff members as well. I think it's important for the department heads, I also think that. Department heads who have an outstanding record. Should see that reflected in compensation.
I think they. My my initial thing, I think the department had one is pretty good, I think the employee one needs some work.
Okay.
You know, I mean, couldn't couldn't we use the same, as Greg said, could we use the same for both?
Sure, certainly.
You know? I mean, we just, we could just change some of the titles, you know, some of the headings, like management skills would be changed to something else, you know? I like I like the idea of needs improvement meets requirements exceeds expectations, you know, superior performance.
Frankly, this is going to be a challenge to implement.
Yes.
I think that. Most department heads have high regard for the staff people within the department. And getting objective responses, I think it's going to be a challenge. That's why I use that language rather than more punitive language, I think, you know, something needs improvement is is preferable to other types of rating systems.
I think my concern was you mentioned performance based increases, how would we? One size fits all or would there be a scale based on Collins for that?
Actually, this is a step away from one size fits all. With the way I would see it would be whatever the standard would be that the. Whatever the standard we would have for next year, you know, a basic cola that the department has with outstanding records. I think should should be given additional, same way with staff people as well, should be given additional compensation.
Are we going to do like a grading system? So we have to say we have 10 requirements and we do like an eight out of 10 scale, they get the pay raise.
They accomplish something on it, then you give them an extra step bonus. Otherwise, then you're so out of whack, you've got, oh, this person got something in this year, this person got something, you've gone off the scale.
But you're eliminating.
Extra things. No, you're asking, how do you compensate then with exceptional?
Performance.
Reviews.
Right.
They get a step. Otherwise, if you're saying we're like, oh, throw an extra ten up this person, a dollar fifty on that person, pretty soon they're out of whack with the grid. I think you use the steps as you performed up and about, you you've grown yourself in your job.
So only for exceptional performance. Not for a standard baseline?
Well, they're getting a step anyway.
Again, actual stuff, yeah.
Yeah, I think for, I think what we want to do is reward exceptional performance. Either with additional compensation or as John says, use the step system.
I think you're.
It doesn't, otherwise it, I otherwise. We we do not have incentives for better performance. Obviously, there's a distance, there's an incentive to perform to the average. Those who are consistently poor performers, I think, would expect consequences. But we need to have positive consequences for department heads who are high achievers, high performers. I mean, this is, this is a very significant step. Away from the one size fits all. Compensation system. Certainly, the the ratings that we we have. As well as the step system makes some sense. But what we're trying to do here is add on to that. An additional incentive based system for high performers.
And so we'll take the employee thing and make it the same as the. The department has changed the heading.
All right, okay.
All right, thank you, Summers Road Crosswalk. Options?
Well, because I am not able to use my laptop, those flashing pedestrian signs that we would post on both sides of the crosswalk can't be shown tonight. We'll just have to move that into next week. But that's, I think that's the important piece to the crosswalk. We have the radar unit that will will measure speed digitally. And then we will have these yellow, these basic standard yellow signs. That have little flashing lights around them and are pedestrian activated for an extra measure of safety.
Give any thoughts about doing a barrel too, like they do on North Main, you saw that up? In addition to the lights, just so people see it, there's that.
If only some, I think they use that as a target.
Yeah.
No, seriously. You talked to me some on DBW, they're replacing them.
Are they?
These signs are solar powered and cost a thousand dollars each.
Any trenching, any installation, like obviously, everything is done via solar, there's no power drop needed for any of this?
No, solar.
I like that.
Really? The question is, if you push the button on one side, how does the signal get to the other side?
If it's flashing both sides?
They're connected. They would be connected.
So they would be.
Yeah, we wouldn't have to trench power in, but we would have to connect the two, the two signs, correct?
So that would go under the road?
Yes.
Underneath the fancy sidewalk.
The fancy sidewalk.
Okay.
I think we'd install that when we installed the crosswalk.
That makes sense.
All right, the shared health inter municipal agreement.
You have. We sent version six. This is. We think the the final version. Again, it would form this. Shared consortium. Of the member towns that we are aware of in the in the area excluding East Long Meadow. And for three years, we would have funding for a health agent. Who would replace the current health agent when she retires in August. And we would have funding for public health nurses. So the this operation would provide public health nurse. Activities for us as well as. The work of the health agent who would do the inspections in Title V and so forth. What the state is doing, what the state. Department of Health is doing is is providing a very significant incentive grant. Very similar to the nine 11 grant that we have. For three years to encourage shared health services among Massachusetts communities.
So the one that's guaranteed in the agreement is year one?
Yes, but there would be money left over for the for the for the other years as well, we had a meeting on that last week. And we clarified that.
It does say in the agreement, though, section 8.2, that fiscal year 23 and 24, that towns will be accordance with available grant funding and municipal funding. So that concerns me. We could be on the hook for money tiers two and three.
Right, that sounds like more like after year one, we saw a need for something and we all got together, as I mentioned, on the group. And said, hey, we're going to get extra number of dollars from the state, but this would be a great thing we get at, it's going to cost each member community another $10,000. And we'd all vote that as a regional budget.
That would be an involvement on the amendments then.
Well, we do have, we do have the funding that we currently have in our budgets. So we're not necessarily talking about new money in years two and three. If we were to need supplemental funds, we would simply shift the funding that we currently have for Lori McCool.
Then are we allowed a certain amount of hours or is it just as needed?
That is to be part of the negotiation.
I don't see that anywhere in here about we're allotted, so five hours a week, three hours a week, what happens if we exceed the use, you know, are we going to get charged?
We we will negotiate the number of hours that we each town receives as a standard. Same way with the the public health nurse. We have a public health nurse for five hours, sometimes she works seven or eight hours a week. Particularly when the first. Part of COVID, she was working more hours. We would not necessarily. Be required to use that service, if we wanted to keep the current arrangement, we could do so. Same thing is true with the certainly the health inspector, we're not under any, that doesn't provide us under any obligation. Seems to me that what what the advantage here, the advantage is that we have a year with complete funding. As an experiment. For the town and actually for all the towns to see if we can make this work.
So they're in charge of all the income, so the money that people pay for the inspection now goes to this coalition?
No, the inspections permits and so forth, Title V work that would come to the town. They don't, the town of Long Meadow, we agreed that the town of Long Meadow. Would. Apply for the grant, being the largest community among the group. But. And and they would control the funding and the so called health director would be. The health director from Long Meadow, who is Mr. Finn McCool. Any inspections that are done in the town that produce revenue, that revenue would go into the general fund of town of Hammond.
But they would still be involved?
So they're spending all the money, sending personnel and we get all the revenue with no cost?
Will they get the, they get the? Great, right?
Right, so therefore the grant is covering their expenses and the the revenue we would normally get to offset our expenses just comes totally to us?
Correct.
Which we would use to pay them eventually at some point.
Well, we're free possibly, yeah, so we build a kitty face. Where's appendix A, Bob? It's referenced in the front book, exhibit A.
You did not receive an appendix A?
There's something exhibit A, list of potential positions.
It wasn't attached, Bob, to.
One of the things, Bob, in the in the in this is that there's a lot of places where they say town manager, some places they say town manager, town administrator. You know, and other places just as town managers, they got to correct that wording.
I, the town manager reference, it would be to the person who manages in Long Meadow, that's, she's a town manager. We did correct, we did some corrections at the last meeting on the whole issue of select board versus Board of Selectment.
Well, like, well, for example, one of it says here, in consultation with the health director, the town managers of the member community, it should say town managers.
Town administrator, yes.
So there's there's this, there's four or five areas like that.
So we're meeting again, we're meeting again in another week. To continue. With the details of this arrangement, we're not asking for anything tonight other than for you to take a look at it, offer any suggestions. But we're not asking you to vote on this tonight.
Or six, there are many numbers after six that we can use, so.
Six and 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 6.7, it says biannually. The boards of health of the member communities will meet jointly with the health director. Just one. Year, shouldn't that be semi annually?
Semi annually, what was, what was the wording you're referring to? Biannually.
That's in one of those years, right?
Yeah. Well, frankly, I get bi annual and bi annual confused, I think bi annual is every two years, bi annual would be would be would be twice a year.
I think annually, I think if you've got the other things quarterly and reporting back, I don't see why that couldn't be annually instead.
Yeah.
You know?
Annually.
Twice a year, I think it's too much.
This would be.
More appropriate.
Bi annually would be.
Bi annual is. Every two.
Twice a year.
Bi annual is every two years, right?
Bi annual is every two years. Bi annual is twice a year.
Can we make it annual?
I'll make it semi annual, how's that?
Semi annual or annual is good. The other thing is, the other thing is, it says here that. That if it, the member community will show, this is 6.13. Each member community shall retain ownership of its public health assets, but the other, but if there's an emergency, they can, the other member communities could, you know, use those assets. Which is fine, how do we replace those assets, do we pay for that or does the?
The inventory of public health assets.
Right, right, you know, the the. Right, right. You know, the, 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 if we, if they come here and they use up all our Band-Aids. Do we, how do we get our Band-Aids back?
What I would do is to bill the shared consortium for those Band-Aids if they have to use them. Frankly, we haven't gone into that particular part of that, but we'll explore that at our next meeting.
Maybe we could get a defined list of what they consider assets.
Define the list of assets that might be used in case of an emergency.
Alright, so we're gonna come up with another draft of that, right?
We'll probably have a draft seven, yes.
Uh, facilities management, management.
Uh, this is the proposal that the chair made uh, to establish a facilities management operation. I put in the packet, the proposal that Don has made.
I think the building inspector misunderstood what I was saying. I, I was just thinking that they would go and see if everything's up to code.
Yeah, I think that was it. I think that's a.
And, and he, he seemed to think that they would be responsible for fixing it, ma- 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 maintaining it.
That could be, I mean, the utility manager might give that thing, but I think uh, an assessment first is really what we're looking.
Yeah, the assessment, you know, once a year, once maybe even two years, I don't know.
We have to contract out, like we're fixing the fire escape at the historical building.
That, that, that's the way I interpreted it as well. I thought that what you were saying was we should have this team so that we're not gonna be surprised as we were with the, the fire station, electrical system.
Looking for us, an assessment.
Assessment, no, no, nothing to fix it. They would just say, look at, you're out of code on the electrical.
Or also keep, like I said, the, the fire escape is supposed to be inspected in five years. Make sure we know that. Who's in charge of? Okay, in twenty twenty-five, we're gonna do it in twenty, you know.
So we wanna make it a formal.
Me, me would, I'm typically the building guy, Andy, I'll solve me with Hobie. And make sure he's in plan with what we're talking about here. An assessment, not a fixing, but just an assessment, okay?
Open inspection report.
Town of Hampden's social media accounts, this is yours.
This is me. So I was talking to Bob the other day and we do a lot with his YouTube channel. And I think we should rebrand that as a town official page. So I can work with Bob and we can kind of set that up where we can utilize that for hosting these public meetings. We can categorize them into different departments. So it's just not all, we had the videos on the page. We can put the town's logo up there and whatnot.
So similar to EO Cat?
Kind of, East Long Meadow does it. Yeah, they have their own EO Cat, but.
You wanna create a YouTube, Hampden YouTube.
Yeah, we, we would just transfer Bob's, cause he's got all the past meetings on there. We could transfer that into the official town YouTube channel. And then like we did uh, for the Memorial Day parade, we could do videos there for different activities in town. Departments can add their own videos, like the stormwater video could be posted on there under a stormwater playlist.
No, I know, but I mean, like uh, with iCloud, or we get to free iCloud account until you want more storage.
You can put as many videos on there as you want, load it all up. Let, let it go for years, backlog it for documentation for years to come.
Okay, what are, what, what do you wanna be our Twitter?
Not Twitter. I do, I, I do think we should create as well um, an official Facebook page for the Town of Hampden. So we can put out information to the public. Most people now, my generation are all on Facebook. They share information. If the town had a way of posting documents, public events, meetings, um, we can even link to the YouTube videos from the channel for informational purposes. Um, it's just another way to get the information out there to the public.
Okay, I think that's a good idea. I think uh, some guidance from the state, I mean, ethics might have a if you're creating an official social media page for the town, it might have some, some suggestions, some guidelines before.
Other, other towns are doing it.
I understand that, maybe they've already done through that.
So what you can do there, if, if there's a concern about commenting or people hijacking it, you can do approvals or you can just say no comments. However it will go.
Sure.
You know, how, whatever they agreed upon. I would think, you know, we'd have the town administrator would be the, the primary oversight. But if we wanted department heads, the selectmen, whoever to be able to put stuff out there regularly, you know, meeting postings. Um, Main Street's closed because of an oil spill, something like that. You know, we could get on there and get the, get the town informed right away.
Do we still, we still have the fire, fire department has their own Facebook page and I think the police department.
Library does too. They all have their own.
Do they, would they all be on that page or would they be?
They'd be on their own separate entity. This would just be the town's operations information. You know, open burning is this week. Um, you know, we're open for permits for this.
Right.
To those?
Absolutely, yeah. You know, whoever would administrate the page, whether it would be one of us, the town admin or a department head. They could also share the information from say, the fire department or the library, you know, they have their, their readings and stuff like that throughout their summer.
Now, can we give their pages, when you talk about, you know, restricting who can post on the town page? Now can we open it up to, okay, library folks, senior center folks, we can allow them to?
We could do that in a way where, you know, the individual that runs that page could have publisher rights on the town, as a department.
I think it's easier than our people having to go and look, oh, I wanna share this from.
Correct. So they, they already know they're sharing it on, say, the library. The library could just automatically share it to the town as well. I think that, that would work.
I think this will work well. Um, I, you know, clearly um, the YouTube page is a town page. I mean, it has my name. We just put it together quickly when COVID came, but it, it is for the town. Uh, uh, postings and uh, also other committees now are uh, doing Zoom recordings of their meetings and asking that they be posted. Uh, we have the veterans committee, we have the conservation committee. Uh, and so I think that will continue to happen. And so rebranding that YouTube uh, 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 account as the Town of Hampden and having the sections that uh, Craig was mentioning for each department or each committee. I think will, will uh, be an improvement. Uh, as far as Facebook, the only problem, I, I think, I can see using Facebook to convey information uh, to town residents. Uh, I would be a little concerned if we were to uh, use Facebook as a debate uh, format. Uh, because that tends to be, that tends to get out of hand and you, you have a very significant monitoring situation. Uh, what's allowed, what's not allowed and so forth. Uh, that would, that'd be a concern.
Yeah, we can totally disable comments so nobody can.
Right. Sure.
We have a social media policy in the handbook now.
We do.
I think there's some, uh, there's some open meeting law stuff too that I think they, they, you know, talk about on there. And I think right one thing where they didn't want the selectmen posting on the town Facebook page. You know, opinions, you know, Greg says I'm for this and I say, yeah, but what about this? Now you're debating and debate.
I think you look at Bob Boalart, he's done a pretty good job of walking the line, I think. About this is my opinion, this is, you know, whichever. It's not easy.
Alright, we'll proceed on that. Uh, let's skip over to the water project, the highway garage project updates.
I can provide an update on the highway garage and that is, uh, we have, uh, I have posted the project um, on the central register. And it should appear, I think they said June second, which would be tomorrow. So we should start receiving bids very soon. Uh, we're going to do another walkthrough at mid-month. And ask that bids be submitted in early July.
I can speed that up, that'd be great. After walkthrough, it would seem like if they've had a couple of weeks to think it over, see the walkthrough and a week to finish the numbers. I sure would like it before the fourth holiday. And really jump into getting the thing awarded, hopefully strike while the iron is hot in terms of getting your contractor. So if we can make that happen, they could help the project.
Okay.
Water projects?
Yeah, we bought, we bought all the pipe that's being stored at your house, Don. Thank you.
Cause I have enough water in my backyard.
No kidding. Uh, for those who didn't attend the meeting we had last week, I think we had a pretty good consensus from our eight years. And board voted to move ahead with the project and uh, the chair signed a, chair or Bob? Signed a contract with time bond to start the process of building the specs and getting it out there. Bob, do you concur? I mean, really, we've hit at the ball.
Yeah.
Any else on that? Uh, correspondence. We have A, B, C, D, E, F.
It's about uh, release of restrictions for uh, restaurants and powering. I really don't know the specifics. I can't think of the top, not mine. But it's been there, it's in the folder.
This part more of the, uh, as we're coming out of the COVID thing.
Yes, yes.
Everybody come back.
Oh yeah, it's just the screen.
The other uh, piece of correspondence we have is a letter from the Mass DEP relative to testing for uh, free PFAS, which is a probably a fluor- fluoroxyl substances appearing in the water. They're offering free testing um, of private wells. They've outlined some areas that they're sending, will be sending invitations to people to test their water for free. And they're asking that we meet with them and someone be with them on noon Friday, June eleventh or for breakfast, eight thirty AM, June tenth, Thursday, June tenth.
Where's the breakfast?
Didn't say. And then uh, but that's, that's Board of Health, so I uh, return this over to the Board of Health. In other correspondence, what else we got? Well, we wanna do the uh, the Parks and Rec request. That was an email.
I have that on my report as well. Uh, you did see a letter from Mr. Turcot asking the board uh, for reconsideration.
I know. I talked to uh, the Chair of Park and Rec and he was apologetic about that. He felt the, the board didn't have the full submittal last week done. I think all we heard was they wanted access to the gas pump. And I think once we saw the full letter from Park explaining the various equipment they had, et cetera. I told Eric that we felt very comfortable bringing it back to our board. Hopefully with a positive uh, resolution. I think the, the letter we finally saw, Don, is a very good explanation of, of their need.
One thing that raised me though is, do we have an inventory of all this equipment?
For their parts and our insurance.
Yes.
It's under our gas.
How does the gas point thing work?
Basically have a card and uh, I think you've got one also.
It just comes out of their budget, right?
Well, it tracks you by number, same thing. That's how it knows if it's a fire request, DPW, at least, et cetera. Now, I don't think, and this hasn't really been determined. The number, amount of gas they're talking about is pretty. Whether we're saying, you know, oh my gosh, we're gonna charge parks for the hundred dollars of gas they use over the spring season. Probably not, but it'd be nice to track. I don't know, I don't know.
I think their point was about reimbursement aspect if they're paying for it out of pocket. They're not getting reimbursed. Yeah, it's very, it's a trial tracking process.
The only thing that'd be, making sure they understand is that uh, you know, go in during hours when the highway's open rather than lock gate type thing, et cetera.
Right. And, and, and does it work like uh, does it work like when you go to a regular gas station?
But that is, it just tracks, the card will track and the computer's located in Mark's office.
Is, is the police fire getting their stuff there? When they get to diesel, where the fire get the diesel? Where they get to?
Anyway, I'd like to propose that the board honor our park mark request.
What's that?
I'd like to make a motion that we uh, honor Parkmark's requests for access to the gas point system.
A second there.
No favor. Uh, selectmen's reports.
Actually, the uh, most of the meetings are starting next week. We do have an inquiry from housing that I'm gonna be meeting with Lisa and coming back to board on. Might be a CPA request that's Housing Authority. COA meeting I think is, what, is uh, next week. I think Bob pushed off the staff meeting, I think, cause he was away. Planning is next week and hopefully we're gonna have a resolution on Amoresco at that point. And I think that dovetails in with the notice we had from assessors. See if we wanna get the pilot and play the systems possible.
They have a lease though.
The lease, the lease is set, right, pilot part, you know. They might, they're right now, really, they're working over the numbers with Hobie. So that might, the other one, I don't think I'll ever make it to time to be Thresher's role. I haven't seen much on that at all.
They had an extension on their approval, I think, for two years or something.
They got a tough road to hold there.
Everything's inside the endangered species.
Um, anything else?
Greg, any reports?
Uh, I ended up with that one because we had a baseball game that night, so I'm gonna do the next one coming up.
But he's doing the kind of undercover work on the Parks and Rec part as being a coach.
Coaching duties to my wife tonight. She was out coaching, so did a good job.
They vote you out. We want, we want Mrs. Ravesta's coach. She buys ice cream.
He doesn't yell at her.
Yeah, I did meet with some of the library today. Um, I, I asked to put on the agenda for next week. But um, they wanna use the auditorium for their evening classes on Thursdays. I wanna make sure that's.
I think we had that request before. We were talking, we pushed it down until after.
We're open.
Right, but there are occasions, not that frequently, that for some reason we might need this space. And I mean, I know they plan out months and months ahead and so we'll have to figure it out soon.
You know, Thursdays are pretty open for us.
Is, is Becky still on? Senior Center opening.
Uh, my understanding there, we had that conversation again, nothing's, they talked about having a soft opening, but really nothing's gonna be happening until July.
Town administrators report?
Uh, yes, we've been over uh, just about everything that I've been involved with in the last week. Uh, the town gas for uh, Park and Rec. As John pointed out, Amoresco has been postponed again until June ninth at their request. Uh, the Highway Garage project has been posted on the central register. The Highway Garage project has been posted on the central register. You have the latest draft of the shared health agreement. I did inform the advisory committee that the selectmen would like to meet with them. Shortly after the beginning of the new fiscal year, to review the budget process. No, no news from Oak Knoll. Susan West called and said that they are continuing to look for alternate housing. For, for a few of the residents. As far as we know, there have been no subsequent problems or incidents over there, but they continue to look. Also, I contacted Attorney Weinberg regarding the closing out of dispatch operations. For the town. And he did suggest, he had a number of suggestions for us, which I'm going to follow up with. As we approach the consolidation date of July 1.
Further to that, where are we with negotiations as? Have we started getting a list together, are they getting?
We have not. I have asked the Chief of Police to put his list together, I know. That he has, we discussed this last week, he's been working on it, I have asked the union head twice. To give me a list of items that they'd like to put on the table, I do not have a response at this point. I point out, though, that the, the, the change in union certification is not yet official. So that's going to drag things out, and. I would hope that we could have a quick negotiation for a new contract, but time is. Time is going by us here, and we don't have the whole union situation settled. I don't think we're going to see any effort to do negotiations until the certification process is completed.
So I would imagine the board's understanding is that it's actually not going to change the overall police budget. Because you have capacity there for whatever we do, based on the dispatch savings.
That affect the hiring of the new officers, though?
No, I mean, it shouldn't, because, I mean, they're coming in at their, and there's.
They're coming in under the old union at that one? So they have to be in the union to be an officer?
Yeah, they're just going to take, they're just going to take the job and go along with it. Don't roll with the punches, no punches.
Really stop taking union dues out?
They'll have to pay back dues.
I'm sure we're not the first town this.
Incidentally, we are in complete compliance with the impact bargaining agreement that the selectmen signed. A while back, so.
Anything else?
That's it.
Is Ed McCula coming, or is he going to be on?
He said he would attend the meeting tonight. In person. I did talk with him today. And. I thought that this session would last a little bit longer. He may not appear until. Maybe around seven thirty, or seven fifteen.
Yeah, we have a small number this week.
I did, there was no answer. I texted him once. The last I talked to him about four thirty, he said he would be here. Because of this conversation, we're on the schedule for, I think, seven forty. He said he'd be here around seven, seven fifty.
I do have to report on the Memorial Day service, Don, it was unfortunate you weren't there, but I thought the DFW did a great job, great job. Well, the F W still did a great job, it's great, a good example of hosting online.
The livestream, the event, so people can watch it, a lot of people appreciated that.
Many people said they missed you, Don.
Don, we should announce that we did do the reopening of town hall for town residents today. And that we're back to normal in terms of allowing the public to go into the offices of the town. And. The, obviously, the requirements that the governor has lifted are in effect in the town of Hamden, so.
While we're in public session, I do want to talk about the school litigation in public a little bit, if we can do that. I'd like to counterpoint some of the stuff that was brought up last week. Just because I was able to go back and do a little bit more research on the contract agreement between Hamden and the regional school district. And I read the contract front to back, and I don't see anywhere here that made mention of last week where we were guaranteed two separate. Education. Elementary, kindergarten, through eighth, middle school. It doesn't say anywhere in the contract that one of the schools must be born Burgess.
It's not a number of buildings, it's just education in the.
Right, yeah, if you, if you read in section three, location of schools. The high school is called out specifically as Minutog Regional High School at six twenty-one Main Street. When you read elementary and middle schools, it makes no mention, it just says all residents of member towns in kindergarten. Through eighth grade inclusive will receive their education facilities located in respective towns. Hold on one second, I just want to finish reading the rest there. It also says that students may be accommodated in other schools within the district approved by the child's parents at school committee. It also says students in K through eight inclusive may be reassigned to schools outside their district respective towns when. Comma, in judgment of the committee, comma, there is a temporary need to reassign students. When damage to physical plant renders the facility unusable, comma, in whole or in part, comma, for its intended purposes. And the way I read that is. We have the education of K through eight that was provided here, there's nowhere does it state that we have to have it at four. So, in my opinion, and this is just reading this, I don't think we have much to say.
Well, Ed, Ed will respond to that words here, because that was part of the court case. He's referring to the list of schools at the end.
Yeah, I saw that.
And it specifically says Thornton Burgess Middle School.
It doesn't state that we must have education there, it just lists those lists of schools of leases by the school district. Doesn't necessarily state that those are be under the education requirements, it just states that they're leased to the district. Not for middle school per se, they're leased to the district for services provided. And there's still services being provided. That's the way I read it as a lease agreement, as a business owner, when I lease a building, I know my contractual agreements of what I can do. And then my lease requirements of what's.
No, I understand, I understand all that, so. But that was part of the court presentation and the summary judgment, so Ed, Ed could. Shed more light on.
But from a philosophical education perspective, is it wise to have kids from K through eight in the same building?
I can say yes, because my students have benefited from having middle schoolers in the school. I have a second grader in the school system right now, and he's been part of the mentorship program that they provide with the older kids. So the older kids come in, they read books together, they have bonding experience. You know, he's had no negative aspects of seeing older kids in his school.
Will we have to provide that same thing to their kids?
I don't know, I can't say for sure, I don't have these two kids in the women's school.
Really, something to say?
Well, I didn't bring a contract with me, so, but from my memory, it said that students would be educated. At the schools, you correct me if I'm wrong. At the two schools, it, it didn't say specifically at the schools grades, this, this, these grades here, this grade there. But it says, it does mention the two schools, Thornton Burgess and Green Metal Schools. And does not seem to infer that one of them would be. Would be closed, not used, I mean, I don't, I don't see that, I don't, but I don't have any problems.
Yeah, I, I searched it, and it doesn't say anywhere about the requirements of schools. It just states the lease, and that's where Thornton Burgess was only mentioned. Yeah, absolutely. That came right off the school district's website today.
Hey, Bob. Bottom of the agenda, what's upcoming meetings? It does mention June 8th, Capital Planning Committee, and then June 8th. Scenic Water Project, but I think that Scenic Water District Commissioners, right?
It's our monthly Tuesday, the second Tuesday of the month.
You're still searching for someone?
Still searching for someone, yeah, we need more than one someone.
Well, i- i- it certainly is. I wish I had mine, because I haven't highlighted, but it, it certainly, it certainly says that all residents of the member towns in grades kindergarten through eight inclusive. Will receive their education in facilities with an S located in this respective town. So it does infer that there's more than one facility.
Parenthesis S, I mean, it's, it says parenthesis S facilities. I don't know, I think you're reading between the lines there, that's kind of.
They will receive their education in facilities located in their respective towns. Seems to say that there are two facilities, or the right of one facility.
But it doesn't call the town, it doesn't call specific buildings out, so.
No, and, and, but it does it in another place.
I guess, I guess, Bob, you're going to have, you're going to have to terminate Bob too, right?
Yes.
Terminally, then we can.
Catch any fish?
I haven't done any fishing yet. Tomorrow morning, bright and early.
We'll take a motion to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, which is the. Or the status of the Hamden-Lowryham Regional School District lawsuit.
Um, Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion.
Stop in the recording.